I call this meeting to order. The time is 5:30. This is a regular meeting of the Weslaco City Commission. As required by law, the Office of the City Secretary properly posted a notice of the meeting. The day is Tuesday, April 2nd, 2024, and the purpose of this meeting is to discuss the agenda as prepared and presented. If during the course of this meeting, the discussion of any item on the agenda should be held in executive or closed session, the City Commission will convene in such executive session in accordance with Section 551.001 of the Texas Government Code. At this time, there are eight executive session items. It is a tradition of this commission to include in its meeting a prayer and pledge of allegiance to our American flag. Tonight, we are pleased to have Pastor Elias Garza from Calvary Christian Center to lead us in our prayer time, and as he comes forward, I ask the audience to please stand.
We can bow our heads, close our eyes for just a second. Lord, we thank you, Lord, for another day of life. We thank you for your new mercies. We thank you for your forgiveness. We thank you, Lord, for just being a part of what we're doing here in the city of Weslaco. Lord, we've come before you this afternoon, Lord, to recognize you first and foremost, Lord, to thank you for your goodness over our lives and over this city, over our community. Lord, and today, as we recognize the different feats, the different accomplishments of so many different people, Lord, we ask that you also be glorified through that as well, Lord. We ask always for wisdom, that is our prayer, Lord, over our city, is wisdom over our leaders, over our commission, over our mayor, Lord, and everyone that would take part in making decisions for the betterment of our community. We thank you. We put this meeting in your hands. In the name of Jesus Christ, we pray.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now, I pledge allegiance to Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Thank you, Pastor Garza. Madam City Secretary, for the record, please conduct the roll call.
Mayor Gonzalez.
Here.
Mayor Protem Farias. Commissioner Kerr.
Present.
Commissioner Gonzalez.
Present.
Commissioner Pedraza. Commissioner Lopez. Commissioner Rodriguez.
Present.
Mayor, let the record show, at time of roll call, we have the absence of Mayor Protem Farias and Commissioner Pedraza, and our quorum is present.
Thank you. We move on to Item E, recognitions.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, City Managers. My name is Jasmine Rico-Jones. I'm the Public Relations Officer for the city of Weslaco, and today we have three very important proclamations or recognitions. We would like to invite Elizabeth Walker's family to come up at this time. I know that we have her mother here, we have her husband here as well, we have her in-laws, we have her son, and I believe her sister as well. So if you could please make your way up here, and Mayor and City Managers and Commissioners, if you could come down as I read this proclamation that we have in memory of Elizabeth M. Walker, former Assistant City Manager and City Secretary. Whereas, it is with deep sadness that we mourn the passing of our esteemed colleague and friend, Elizabeth M. Walker, who served with dedication and distinction as the Assistant City Manager and City Secretary for the city of Weslaco. And whereas Elizabeth was a true servant leader with a passion for public service, dedicating herself wholeheartedly to the betterment of our community and championing the city of Weslaco in every endeavor she undertook. And whereas Elizabeth's journey of service to Weslaco began as a long-range planner in the Weslaco Planning Department, where she demonstrated her commitment to thoughtful and forward-thinking city planning initiatives. And whereas Elizabeth's unwavering dedication to her duties led her to serve as the city manager's executive assistant, and later as city secretary, where she played a vital role in ensuring the efficient functioning of city government and upholding transparency and accountability in all city affairs. And whereas Elizabeth's leadership and expertise were further recognized when she assumed the role of interim city manager in 2014, seamlessly fulfilling her responsibilities while continuing to serve as city secretary. And whereas from 2015 to 2018, Elizabeth served with distinction as Assistant City Manager and City Secretary, leaving an indelible mark on the city of Weslaco through her tireless advocacy and dedication to public service. And whereas Elizabeth's legacy extends beyond her professional achievements, as she was also a beloved wife and mother who brought joy and compassion to all those lives she touched. And whereas, on behalf of Mayor Adrian Gonzalez, the Weslaco City Commission, City Managers, and the entire city of Weslaco staff, we extend our deepest condolences and prayers for peace and comfort to Elizabeth's family, especially her son Elijah, during this time of profound loss. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the city of Weslaco that we honor the memory and legacy of Elizabeth M. Walker, expressing our gratitude for her selfless service and dedication to the city of Weslaco and its residents. At this time, we'd like to present you with this proclamation, and we also have a little recognition for you as well. If the commission and city managers and mayor would stay here with us, we have another very important proclamation, this time for our retired Captain Richard Stubbs, if he could join us up here, along with any friends or family who would like to be part of the pictures, and staff as well, please. Whereas today marks a significant milestone as our esteemed colleague and dedicated public servant Captain Richard Stubbs embarks on a well-deserved retirement after 27 years of unwavering commitment to the city of Weslaco's fire department. And whereas Captain Stubbs' remarkable journey in service to our community began at the tender age of 14, when he joined the Twin Hills Fire Department as a fire explorer, where he honed his skills and passion for firefighting and emergency response. And whereas Captain Stubbs continued his journey, serving with distinction as a seasonal firefighter with the California Department of Forestry and Fire Protection, before ultimately finding his calling in the Rio Grande Valley, where he dedicated himself to protecting and serving the residents of Weslaco and beyond. And whereas throughout his illustrious career with the Weslaco Fire Department, Captain Stubbs distinguished himself as a paramedic, fire EMS instructor, hazardous materials tech incident commander, and master firefighter, demonstrating unparalleled expertise and leadership in all aspects of emergency response. And whereas Captain Stubbs' selfless dedication extended far beyond the borders of Weslaco as he answered the call of duty time and time again, deploying across Texas and beyond to assist in various disaster response efforts, including hurricanes, medical emergencies, and community resilience initiatives. And whereas Captain Stubbs' legacy of service and commitment to community preparedness is further exemplified by his founding of the RGV Youth Preparedness Camp, a free program dedicated to engaging teens in disaster preparedness and community resilience, leaving a lasting impact on future generations. And whereas Captain Stubbs' unwavering dedication to his duties and his community would not have been possible without the steadfast support of his loving wife, Amy, and their cherished family, whose unwavering love and encouragement have been his source of strength and inspiration throughout his career. Now therefore, in heartfelt appreciation and in sincere gratitude for his outstanding service, exemplary leadership, and unwavering commitment to the safety and well-being of the residents of Weslaco, be it resolved that Mayor Adrian Gonzalez, Mayor of the city of Weslaco, Texas, and the City Commission, by virtue of the authority vested in him, do hereby recognize and congratulate retired Weslaco Fire Captain Richard Stubbs.
The Weslaco Fire Department would like to thank Captain Stubbs for his 27 years of service to the citizens of Weslaco. Over the years, Captain Stubbs has been part of a lot of firsts, not only in the city of Weslaco, but a lot of firsts in the state of Texas and some firsts in the United States as being one of the first responders deploying to take care of one of the first COVID citizens coming, being brought back from Japan from the cruise ship that was in Japan during the COVID, when initially first happened. Captain Stubbs was part of that Weslaco Fire Group that went and took care of these patients that were first populated back into the United States. So again, Captain Stubbs, on the behalf of the Weslaco Fire Department and myself, thank you for all your years that you gave selflessness to the citizens at any time of the day, 2:00, 3:00 in the morning, and also for the further development of the Weslaco Office of Emergency Management, which has put us on the map as an organization, as a city, where we go anywhere in the state of Texas, they know where Weslaco Office of Emergency Managers is from and where Weslaco Fire Department is from. So thank you for making my job very easy and being a true representation of what Weslaco is about. Thank you.
Once again, Captain, I appreciate your service and thank you for your service, and wish you nothing but the best, and, well, now it's all honeydews, man, after you retire. Now it's really work.
All right. We'd like to invite the Weslaco High School Dreamets and all of their leaders up to the Let me tell you a little bit about the Dreamets. They were organized in 2015, that's nine years ago, and they have an annual journey to reach champion status that begins at the beginning of every year. And so the Dreamets have competed every year since the organization began. They have numerous awards that they've achieved, but this year was the very first time that they've reached national grand champion status, and earlier this month, at the Showtime International Regional Competition on March 9th. We have Delma Solithor, who is the Dreamet head sponsor, and her passion for dance and drill team began earlier when she was a part of the Weslaco High School Pace Setters, the original dance team, that performed along the WHS Show Band of the Valley, and she's worked with these girls. She has a degree in kinesiology and a minor in health. And something that she mentioned, we also have Mariana Ariola, who's the dance coach and has been for over 10 years with the drill team, and she's been a part of this company as well. So March 9th, they were the Showtime International Regional, the regional competition, and they were the regional grand champions. And then on March 23rd and 24th, they reached the status of Showtime International Grand Champion. So let's give them a round of applause for that. And what their leaders have said is that these young women are being told just how special and how lovely they are each and every day. And something that Ms. Solithor said is that, you know, she's able to teach these young women how important they are and have that positive attitude that they can take with them, and without that positive attitude, they would not have been able to achieve this status, and I totally believe that that's true. And so on behalf of the city of Weslaco and Mayor Adrian Gonzalez, we'd like to present you this recognition, this plaque, and it says, "Presented to the Weslaco High School Dreamets in celebration of your dazzling achievement as Showtime International Grand Champions, and in recognition of the unwavering dedication to excellence and the honor your commitment, talent, and teamwork have brought to our community of Weslaco, Texas." Ms. Morales, if she can come up as well to take a photo with us, that would be awesome. Thank you. Yes, of course. Anybody else? Anybody else here for the Dreamets who would like to pronounce their name?
to congratulate you guys, and I know that, I guess, when they asked, I was like, of course we can recognize, you know, the Dreamets and everybody from the city of Weslaco that
The girls know what to do.
represent the city of Weslaco. I guess I brought a little bit of the school board member of myself, you know, over here to the city, so it's always an honor to recognize our students from Weslaco ISD and anywhere else, IDEA, and anybody that is in the city of Weslaco. We're here to recognize anybody in the city of Weslaco. So again, I want to congratulate you guys and all your hard work and dedication, and look at you guys, you know, what an awesome, awesome accomplishment. I'm so proud of you guys, and to the parents as well, I'm pretty sure it's, you know, it's stressful, and having, you know, your daughters and getting them dressed and in uniform and all. My daughter was a cheerleader, so I know the hard work it takes. So congratulations to you guys as well. So again, congratulations. All right, we'll go on, and we'll go to public comments.
Mayor, tonight, we have no public comments.
All right. We'll move on to reports. Item A, Weslaco Economic Development Corporation. Mr. Steve, are you ready? I know you weren't ready earlier.
Thank you, Mayor. That's one way to clear the room. Congratulations to the team. Get me up next, I'll take care of that for you. Just a few items to report on behalf of the EDC. Last week, we had what's called the RGV Partnership Weslaco Investment Tour, Commercial and Investment Tour. We had over 80 attendees, and it was well-received by the audience. Thank you, Mayor, for presenting the closing remarks at the event and the opening as well, so thank you for your involvement. We learned also this week that Texas Roadhouse should be opening in May, so we're excited about their opening. We also learned that McDonald's started, or they broke ground on 10/15 back in March, and their expected opening date is in June. We're also excited to have a third Starbucks in Weslaco on the south end of town, near the neighborhood Walmart store. Some new initiatives that the EDC staff has been working on is working with our downtown business owners. We've had two meetings so far, and again, thank you, Mayor, for attending, and City Manager for attending those meetings. It's important for the downtown business owners to have a voice, and we've been helping them with that. And speaking of downtown, we saw the opening of Señor Barbados, and that's also been embraced well by the community. EDC staff has also been in collaboration with Workforce Solutions in hosting what's called the Second Chance Job Fair. That's happening tomorrow at our building across the hall from us, and so that'll go on from 9:00 a.m. to noon. The audience, or their target audience there is people that have been through the criminal justice system, but it's open to all the community that might be looking for a job. EDC staff also is working with the Governor's Office in what's called the Governor's Small Business Summit. That's going to be held on Thursday. Again, thank you for opening remarks, Mayor, at that event. That's happening again Thursday at the Palacio de Destiny. It's, the people that are invited there are small business owners and aspiring business owners. As of yesterday, we heard that there were 180 registered, which is a high for this time of year, and us being the first ones, so usually that's registered. That means that there'd be probably more because we're also not always very good at RSVPing, so we should have a great turnout tomorrow, I'm sorry, Thursday as well. Any questions that I can help you with? That's our report for today.
No, Steve, I'm just saying, I'm just excited about Thursday, and thank you guys, whoever was involved in putting that together. You did a great job, and I'm looking forward to Thursday and informing people that want to listen and maybe learn a little bit, and I'm glad that it's happening here in Weslaco.
Right.
So thank you.
Thank you so much.
Also, hands off to y'all for the Glaciers.
Yes, thank you, Steve.
Great event.
Move on to Item B.
Hello, Mayor, Commissioner. We have a few things going on. We're still in recovery mode from the Texas Onion Festival, which has been one of our biggest festivals yet. We thank all of you for your support and being a part of that, and hope you had an opportunity to enjoy the event. It was truly one of our biggest events this year, and I know that it will continue to grow in the coming year. You should have a copy of the report for today that shows some of the expenses for the destination marketing with the city of Weslaco and our hotel occupancy tax dollars, so that should be on your desks there. We have total expenditures of $16,069 for the month of March. In addition to that, in the visitor center, we had 1,825 visitors come into the facility that does have a lot to do with the voters that came into the building during that time, but we do continue to see a good amount of traffic coming in and out of the facility. So I will tell you that we have been very, very busy. You'll see there on the report a list of upcoming events. Tomorrow, we do have a monthly networking event that will be taking place at Oak Texas Bar and Grill, an effort that we do on a monthly basis to support local businesses. In addition to that, we are sponsors for the Governor's Small Business Summit that Steve just mentioned. We look forward to being there and supporting the EDC and being a part of this particular event. We also will be hosting a solar eclipse viewing party, so we'll talk more on that in just a second. We have another presentation with the Weslaco High Family Consumer Science Class will be coming to visit the visitor center next week. We have a ribbon cutting scheduled for Fit Lab Fitness on Saturday, April 13th, and a milestone ribbon cutting for Windsor Nursing of Weslaco on April 24th. And again, we continue to invite you to these events if you're available. We would love to have you there to support local businesses. The event that you do not see listed here, that is pending confirmation on our side, is the Glaciers Ribbon Cutting that will be scheduled for April 24th at 10:00 a.m. In addition to that, on the back of that report, you do have some of the community events and highlights that we've had over the past few months. I did want to re-recognize that we had our annual awards program where we recognized the Business of the Year, which is Teddy's Barbecue, our Woman of the Year, Cynthia Benavides with Benavides Law Firm, our Man of the Year, Daniel Montes with South Texas College, and our Lifetime Achievement winner, Mr. Randy Summers with Davis Equity. We also named six new royal court members who are part of the Weslaco Royal Court that represent our city at different community events. They are all listed here. We continue to run the Weslaco Pageant as part of an initiative to support Weslaco and bring in student ambassadors to recognize our city. And then, as I mentioned, the Texas Onion Festival was truly a great success, really due to the partnership with the city of Weslaco. And of course, all of the teams that were a part of that, you know, our hands off to PD, Fire, all of the volunteers, our city leaders, who really just helped us get through that event. I remind you that the chamber is a staff of three, and so when we have the support from the city, we're able to really make great things happen. We did have a variety of ribbon cuttings that took place. They're listed there for your review. Our most recent was the Benjen Morris Sierra Propane Ribbon Cutting, and we also did have some events that took place, meetings and workshops for business members. In addition to that, we are working on an upcoming job fair. I did want to mention that we are promoting the solar eclipse that's scheduled for Monday, April 8th. We'll be passing out some goodie bags that we're giving out to community. They will be available at the visitor center for anybody that would like to pick them up. Anthony's going to give you one of those goodie bags, so you all can kind of see what we're giving out to community. It's basically just a solar eclipse emergency kit packet with your solar glasses and some solar eclipse snacks for you to enjoy. So we encourage anybody to stop by the visitor center to pick up their solar glasses to check out that solar eclipse on Monday.
So I take it this is the one you can't look directly at?
Yes. Please use the glasses. Other than that, we continue working hard on upcoming events and programs, and we thank you for your support. Any questions?
No, no, just a tremendous job at Onion Fest.
Thank you for doing the onion eating contest. I know that was.
Commissioner Farias took that, but yes, no, it was great. There was a lot of people. Shout out to the police, Fire, and everybody involved in making this happen, you know, to your board, and I know, again, I know it took a lot, a lot of work, and we saw it, you know, there was over, I want to say, over 35,000 people that attended at Onion Fest.
Consistent, you know, consistent flow all day long, and that's something that we really did feel this year, that it started 9:30 a.m. all the way till 10:30 p.m., we saw people there all day long. So can definitely say that people really enjoyed the event, and we had a great turnout.
Yeah, so again, congratulations on that.
Thank you. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you, Barbara. We'll move on to consent agenda. I'll start off to my left. Commissioner Kerr, do you have anything to pull?
No, sir.
Commissioner Lopez?
No.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
No.
Commissioner Ruiz?
No, sir.
I'm just going to go ahead and pull Item D to discuss. Okay, do I have a motion to pass consent agenda?
Move to approve consent agenda, Items A, 1, B, and C.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Kerr and a second by Commissioner Ruiz to pass the consent agenda as discussed. All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion passes. Go on to Item D.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor, Commissioner, Mr. Garza, Mr. Muñoz. Item D is us requesting for permission through our grant writers' office to go out for the SAFER grant. This is something that I know that the mayor has been pushing us to make sure that we get the applications in, along with Mr. Garza and the rest of the commission. So we've been working the last couple of weeks to get all the data that needs to be turned in for this grant. It's a federal grant. It's a very competitive grant in, throughout the United States, of all fire departments, trying to get staffing, and I know that's one of the major things that all, not only in Weslaco, but every department in the United States, is always trying to, you know, find funding sources and grants to be able to get these positions within the fire department. So this is our, again, last year, we did submit for the SAFER grant, very competitive, but again, this year, we want to make sure that we get ahead of the game, to see how the city is going to be growing in the future, and being able to use these grant opportunities to go and help us out to deliver those services that we need and our citizens request every day.
We're looking at six positions, Chief?
We're asking for six positions, Mr. Mayor, and Commissioner, on this one, to go out for six positions. This would be over a cost share over a three-year period if awarded. Last year and the year before, I think they had 100% for three years. I know it has been before 75% or 100% the first year, 75, and then 25, 50%, and then 25%, and then at the end of the years, the city would absorb those positions. So I believe that any help that we can find through grants would give us the opportunity to get.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion passes. Go on to item D.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor, Commissioner, Mr. Garza, Mr. Muñoz. Item D is us requesting for permission for, through our grant writers' office, to go out for the SAFER grant. This is something that I know that the mayor has been pushing us to make sure that we get the applications in, along with Mr. Garza and the rest of the commission. So we've been working the last couple of weeks to get all the data that needs to be turned in for this grant. It's a federal grant, it's a very competitive grant in, throughout the United States of all fire departments, trying to get staffing. And I know that's one of the major things that all, not only in Weslaco, but every department in the United States is always trying to, you know, find funding sources and grants to be able to, to get these positions within the fire department. So this is our, again, last year, we did submit for the SAFER grant, very competitive. But again, this year, we want to make sure that we get ahead of the game, to see how the city is going to be growing in the future, and being able to use these grant opportunities to go and help us out to deliver those services that we need and our citizens request every day.
We're looking at six positions?
We're asking for six positions, Mr. Mayor, and Commissioner, on this one, to go out for six positions. This would be over a cost share over a three-year period if awarded. Last year and the year before, I think they had 100% for three years. I know it has been before 75%, or 100% the first year, 75, and then 25, 50%, and then 25%, and then at the end of the years, the city would absorb those positions. So I believe that any help that we can find through grants and would give us the opportunity to get to those numbers a lot quicker than we were in other ways.
Awesome, thank you, Chief, and I know that this would be a great help to your department. And so, great job, and hopefully, everything goes through.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Do I have a motion to approve item D?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Lopez and a second by Commissioner Gonzalez to approve item D as discussed. All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes.
Thank you.
Go on to new business, item A.
Item A, discussion and consideration to approve an inter-local agreement between the city of Weslaco and city of Mercedes for sanitary sewer and water services for Camino de Verdad Phase 2, and authorize the mayor to execute any related documents, possible action.
I had a picture. Or not. The proposed subdivision is located outside our West Coast city limits and is within the ETJ of Weslaco, outside our city limits and outside the ETJ of Weslaco. Portions of the property fall outside the city's CCN for water and sewer. The proposed development is within city of Weslaco, city of Mercedes city limits, and the CCN for the utilities is also Mercedes. However, Mercedes does not currently have utilities in the area. The proposed agreement will allow Weslaco to provide water and sewer to the development until Mercedes is able to extend their lines to this area. Our city attorney has already reviewed the contract and has made a couple modifications in the indemnity section. Other than that, we are okay to approve, so staff is recommending approval.
Okay. So staff and?
City attorney.
City attorney, okay.
Yes, sir.
Do I have a motion to approve item A?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Lopez and a second by Commissioner Rodriguez to approve item A as discussed. All in favor, vote by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign, motion passes. We move on to item B.
Item B, discussion and consideration on the petition from Garbic properties. Oh, I'm sorry. LP for the release of Milano's Estates Phase 2, 3, and 4 real property located in the city's ETJ, and authorize the mayor to execute any related documents, possible action.
So the proposed subdivision is located outside our West Coast city limits and is located inside the city's ETJ. The final plot approvals have already been approved for Phase 2, 3, and 4, and Phase 2 is almost complete in their construction. We do provide this area with water and sewer, and the owner is requesting removal from our ETJ pursuant to the new House Bill 2038, in accordance to the new House Bill, staff is recommending approval.
So this is, we?
This removes all our authority. We still have authority over our water and sewer lines, but that is removing it from our subdivision authority.
So what's the reason we would want to do this?
This is, go ahead.
Okay, so the new statute, if they apply for it, we have to grant it. Okay.
So it's not?
We haven't got it.
So it's not permissive, as long as they file the petition, we have to comply with it?
Because of that Senate bill?
Yes.
The first time. And we did get an opinion too from TML, and TML is saying the same thing that city attorney is saying.
We don't have discretion, okay.
No, sir.
Although we still have authorization under our CCN limitations on the fact that we still have authority over, you know, the compliance of the type of lines and the connections to our infrastructure.
So we can still oversee the construction of the water and sewer.
We still inspect and do other code enforcement part of that.
What was it, what did you say, Rebecca? I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't.
We still have control over the construction of the water and sewer lines.
So now who issues building permits and all that, I guess it goes to?
No, we would need a development agreement in order to do that, because that's actually against state law.
Well, who does, who does now, if there's a?
County.
County.
Yeah, if the developer is willing to entertain a development agreement with us, that would allow us to alter and at least review the permits for tapping and connecting. But they have to agree to a development agreement, otherwise, no, they can't.
And this isn't just anybody in the ETJ can, there's certain criteria you have to meet, or?
Nope.
Anybody in the ETJ?
Yes, sir.
And there's nothing we can do about it?
So far, no.
Can we keep an eye on it, Mr. Gonzalez, to see if there's any other cities that are coming together to challenges? Just for picture references?
All right. Any more discussion? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Kerr and a second by Commissioner Lopez to approve item B as discussed. All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Item C?
Item C, discussion and consideration on petition from DASC Investments LLC for the release of Highland Manor Phase 3 real property located in the city's ETJ, and authorize the mayor to execute any related documents, possible action.
The proposed subdivision is located outside our West Coast city limits and within our ETJ. The subdivision has already received final plot approval and is currently under construction at County. City does not provide any utilities to this area. North Alamo is the CCN for water, and they are currently on septic tanks. They are also requesting removal from the ETJ pursuant to House Bill 2038. Staff is recommending, yeah, same thing.
And this one's out of the city limits as well, we don't provide anything?
Oh, yeah, we don't provide anything to this one.
All right. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion by Commissioner Lopez and a second by Commissioner Kerr to approve item C as discussed. All in favor, vote by saying aye.
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 All opposed, motion passes.
Thank you.
We move on to item D.
Item D, discussion and consideration on ordinance 2024-11, adopting a 50% property tax exemption for qualifying childcare facilities in accordance with Senate Bill 1145, and authorize the mayor to execute any related documents. First reading of ordinance 2024-11, possible action.
Thank you, Ms. Norma, Mayor Commissioners, good afternoon once again. This is in response to the agenda item that we had in the last meeting of March 19, 2024, regarding a discussion and approval of an exemption of 50% of the appraised value of all or a portion of legal property used to operate childcare facilities inside the city limits of Weslaco. And this is in response to a proposition, which is Proposition 2, that was approved back in November of '07, 2023. And in return, the Texas legislation enacted, you know, Senate Bill 1145, which actually amended the tax code to allow property tax exemptions for certain child daycare facilities, right? And so this is the next step, this is creating the ordinance, and we recognize that the economic challenges faced by the childcare providers and the necessity of quality childcare services are important to the citizens of Weslaco and to the city commission. So with that in mind, we're asking for approval of ordinance 2024-11 to allow us to take this Senate bill into effect.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Kerr and a second by Commissioner Farias to approve item D as discussed. All in favor, vote by saying aye.
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 All opposed, motion passes. We move on to item E.
Item E, discussion and consideration on renewal of the agreement with Armando Martinez, DBA M5, Texas Enterprises LLC Consulting Services, and authorize the mayor to execute any related documents, possible action.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners, we're asking for no action on this item. We're still negotiating the components of the agreement, so we ask in respect of that negotiation that we ask for no action tonight. We'll bring it back in the next agenda item, the next agenda session.
What's the reason for no action?
We're looking at some of the performance measures on the contract and coming to agreements on the type of trainings, as well as when those are going to happen during the calendar year. So we're trying to set out a schedule of when that's going to be able to happen, so that way we have a way of doing the performance measures on the contract. So we're still negotiating those terms.
We haven't done that before?
We have, but we never put anything in terms of specific dates or terms of year, of the year, unable to do that. We just said, these are the classes that we're going to need, and so we just teach those over the year. And so you went for some months where you didn't have any activity, and so we're trying to get it towards a continual, annual, monthly type of performance measure.
And are we mandating that they go to these classes, or are they at will to go anywhere?
It's part of their certification process, yes, sir. Are they continuing certification process, yes, sir, that's what we're doing.
The only thing you're doing here then is scheduling a calendar, making a calendar, is that what you're doing?
We're establishing performance measures on the contract, yes, sir, based on the calendar of events, on both what the fire department's able to do and to minimize overtime, as well as what Armando Martinez can do during his schedule of how we can negotiate those terms out, and that's what we're doing to try to create that calendar, which then allows us to do performance measures.
Chief, is there something happening in there at the fire department that we're not? Is it, you know, this is a contract that's been going on, and I thought it was a cost-efficient plan that we had in place.
Well, that's right, I didn't get to hear.
Is there something happening? I know we've had this contract in place because it was cost-efficient and it saved the city money. Is there a reason? Now that we're scheduling a calendar now?
No, it's just that now that they want to, management wants to see that the calendar is done just for the performance measures, that's it.
Can we, we can't do that as we go?
We don't have anything in terms of actual performance-based and where we can come back and measure. So if someone were to come in and do a PIR request to say, on any contract that we have, not just specifically this contract, but we're able to measure the performance through payouts, through trainings, sign-in sheets, things of that nature, so that way we know that we're actually getting performance for the taxpayers' dollar.
Is this something you plan to do on all of our?
Moving forward, yes, sir, on all of our contracts.
Okay.
We'll specifically put those measures in every contract, yes, sir.
What we need to do is, is have communication.
Yes, sir.
And I've always said that communication is key. And so we need to make sure that there's communication between all our people and any professional services. You know, we come over here and then we just, we don't communicate with another, and we get stuck in a situation like this. So moving forward, we need to make sure we continue that communication process and, you know, educate our firefighters of what's out there. If we're providing you with a vehicle, we need to use it.
Agreed.
All right. Take no action on item E until, Mr. Andrew, you?
Next meeting, sir, we should have something negotiated up.
We'll move on to item F.
Item F, discussion and consideration accepting, replacing, and using the following Weslaco Mid Valley Airport lease agreements. A, third-party development and ground lease. B, third-party lease of city-owned facilities, non-aeronautical. C, third-party lease of city-owned facilities, aeronautical.
Go ahead, sir.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. As part of our airport master plan, it's been a tradition that every time that we modify the lease agreements, the templates, we bring those before the airport advisory board, as well as the city commission, for your review and your agreeance on using these as a base templates for the negotiations for our tenants at the airport. What we've done is, in the past, we've had air lease agreements that only just specifically looked at ground lease agreements and didn't look at the use of the airport. Now that the airport is getting busier, we want to move towards Part 139 compliant with the FAA. As part of that, we need to start identifying the use of the airport, and what we've done is we've integrated aeronautical and non-aeronautical use of the facilities and the improvements at the airport. And so we, with our consultants, Dan Benson and John DeCosta, who were here last meeting, they developed these new lease agreements to make sure that we're in compliance with FAA and TaxDOT regulations. And so we're just bringing this to you for approval. We did go to the advisory board, they did pass the item unanimously, and so staff recommends approval.
Andrew, does this take effect right away, or?
No, sir. What we're still pending is a third phase, which is the appraisal services. It goes out for bid, I believe we solicit starting tomorrow for 30 days. Once we hire the firm to do the appraisals, they have 60 days to give us an appraisal that establishes fair market value of what each specific tenant is there at the airport and what that specific property is used for, that improvement. At that point, it gives us a baseline for negotiations for the rent, because we have to maximize as much potential rent as we can according to FAA.
We're looking maybe September for all that to be, about maybe?
Thereabouts, hopefully a little bit earlier, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Kerr and a second by Commissioner Farias to approve item F as discussed. All in favor, vote by saying aye.
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 Motion passes. Item G?
Item G, discussion and consideration to solicit requests for bids for security services at the Weslaco Mid Valley Airport, and authorize the mayor to execute any related documents, possible action.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. As the airport is growing, we're getting significantly more traffic, especially after hours. And what we do currently is we've had patrol by PD, and we've increased that patrol around the airport. We talked to the police chief, and we have a lot more activity after hours than before hours. And so what we've done is we've asked, we're coming before you to request bids for security. Right now, what we want to do for the remainder of the fiscal year is just part-time security, and then as we go through the budget process, go for 24/7 security at the airport. We do have traffic that's at after hours, significantly after hours, about 1:00, 2:00 in the morning. And so to minimize any illegal activity that we may have at the airport, this is one thing that we want to do in compliance as we move towards Part 139 with FAA. Staff recommends approval.
This was, and this was, you were getting asked also about this, right?
Yes, sir.
By the tenants that are there?
Yes.
We're looking at armed services, correct?
Correct, only armed services.
How many, how many do?
I'm sorry?
We're looking at level 2, level 3, or what?
I believe level 3.
How many are we planning to get, Andrew?
Right now, we just, we have one guard in the morning, one guard at night. And so they rotate, and then on their days off, they have a third guard that comes in. And so we don't know who those guards are in advance, so that way we can train them how to properly work at the airport, and they abide by our rules and regulations at the airport.
And do we hire them already? I thought I saw on the report.
Right now, we're just on a temporary agreement until we can go out for bids. And once we do that, we'll negotiate a contract, bring that contract for your approval, and we'll begin services as quickly as we can at the airport.
Let's make sure we get Chief Rivera and his staff involved in?
Yes, no, no, he'll be a part of the evaluation process.
Okay.
Thank you, Andrew, do I have a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion by Commissioner Lopez and a second by Commissioner Ruiz to approve item G as discussed. All in favor, vote by saying aye.
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 Motion passes. Move on to item H.
Item H, discussion and consideration to solicit statement of qualifications for engineering services to conduct a feasibility study, environmental determination, design services, grant administration, and construction bid documents for the proposed runway and parallel taxiway expansion for the Weslaco Mid Valley Airport, and authorize the mayor to execute any related documents, possible action.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. A couple of weeks ago, the mayor, the city manager, and I attended a meeting in Austin with TaxDOT Aviation through Armando Martinez's office. We had a very successful communications with TaxDOT and how we want to improve the airport and the growth plans of the airport with the parallel taxiway and the runway expansion project. What they suggested is we use our years 3, 4, and 5 of the BIL IIJA monies, which is the ARPA for airports monies, to go ahead and begin doing the preliminary work for the airport and doing the environmental studies, the engineering studies, things of that nature, so it shortens the process. Once we do get final approval through TaxDOT and FAA to do these expansion projects, it helps eliminate, it's time-saving, cost savings for us. And so what we'd like to do is we'd like to bring an engineer to go ahead and begin that process. That TaxDOT will reimburse us for those costs at 9010. This is using our IIJA monies, our BIL monies for years 3, 4, and 5. Staff recommends approval.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Kerr and a second by Commissioner Lopez to approve item H as discussed. All in favor, vote by saying aye.
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 All opposed, motion passes.
Mr. Muñoz, can you mention the name of your committee, please?
Yes, sir. What we have on the committee is Homer Rhodes, myself, Chairperson Randy Summers on the advisory board. What we have on the committee is Homer Rhodes, myself, Chairperson Randy Summers on the advisory board, Albert Alana, the city engineer, and we would need someone from the commission. Or we'd like to have someone from the commission sit on this evaluation committee as well.
Okay. We'll go ahead and get a name for you.
Great.
Appreciate it.
Great.
If anybody wants to jump on, we'll, we'll, we'll get, we'll get with somebody here.
Okay, sure.
Commissioner?
We've got a campaign to run, man, sir.
Oh, we'll get you somebody, sir.
I know I'll let you down.
We'll get you somebody.
Big job with his hands, sir.
Thank you. We'll move on to item I.
Item I, discussion and consideration to declare old and expired fire equipment as surplus, such as end-of-life bunker gear, helmet, pants, boots, coats, and authorize the mayor to execute any related documents, possible action.
Chief?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, Mr. Munoz, after doing an inventory, we have identified gear, uniform, which is the bunker coat, the bunker pants, helmets, pants, boots, and surplus that have, that are at end of life. So they have a expiration date for use in the United States. So we have some sets that are, are, we're asking to be surplused, so we can, we're moving from our list.
All right.
Tomo.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Kerr and a second by Commissioner Lopez to approve item I as discussed. All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Item J?
Item J, discussion and consideration to donate all fire equipment declared as surplus, bunker gear, coats, helmets, pants, boots, to Sister City, Rio Bravo Fire Department, and authorize the mayor to execute any related documents, possible action.
Chief?
Mr. Mayor, on March twenty-first, I visited in the morning, all morning along with our Sister City Fire Department in Rio Bravo, Mexico, and got to see the excitement that their firefighters had, as ours do when they receive gear, receive a new truck, or receive any type of training. So being with them that morning in Mexico and, and Las Flores, Mexico, Rio Bravo area, we did, had that number already identified, so what you just surplused on the previous item is ten helmets, ten coats, ten pants, ten boots, everything that would make a full wardrobe for a firefighter to do firefighting. And seeing some of the equipment they had, some of them had a coat, they didn't have pants. Some of them had a pants, but they didn't have boots, they were working in regular work boots that you would, that you would have, they could buy at the store. So I'm asking, and I know this is, our Sister City, Rio Bravo, and the city has helped them a lot in the year and a half of being Sister City. We're asking, Mr. Mayor, if you would extend the, the donation to Rio Bravo, and that's what this item is for, sir.
Hey, Chief, I just had one question.
Second.
Sorry.
Yes, sir.
Is, is, is our trucks still running over there?
Yeah, so actually, they have fixed the truck. I know it had engine issues before. They have done a complete overhaul on the engine and, you know, but they were very efficient to getting the truck running again. One of the things is that they're in the process of, I believe it's still at the shop on the U S side. They are trying to facilitate the move over the bridge. So I did advise them on the twenty-first that we would visit them in, in Rio Bravo and Las Flores to let us know anything that we can do to facilitate that easy move for them to take that home and put it to work. I could see that truck being in use for them another ten to fifteen years, easy, and helping the citizens of Rio Bravo and our neighboring Sister City. Yes, sir. And they send their thank you, because every time I see them, they always send their thank you to you all for keeping them in, in, in mind and, and that equipment will be to you, will be put to work.
Great.
Yes, sir.
Do I have a motion? I have a motion by Commissioner Kerr and a second by Commissioner Lopez to approve item J as discussed. All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tony.
We're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna go ahead and move to L and M to get that out of the way, and then we'll come back to K. So let's move to item L.
Item L, discussion and consideration to award H G A C by contract number R C zero-one dash twenty-one to vendor I P L North America, Inc., for the purchase of seven hundred and fifteen residential Omni Cart trash bins for an amount not to exceed thirty-six thousand four hundred forty-four, and authorize the mayor to execute any related documents, possible action.
So.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. The orig, oh, sorry. We are, we need to purchase more trash cans for residential customers. We currently have about a hundred and twenty bins in backstock. The bins will take about six to seven weeks to arrive, so we are, we are current, we're gonna keep the same container, same vendor as what we've previously done the past two orders. This order is our third order since, since the rollout. We are recommending the seven hundred and fifteen to maximize the freight charges. A budget amendment is required for the purchase of these bins. And there is a small change to the, the number, the number on the, on the item was thirty-six four forty-three. It's actually thirty-five eight forty-four after talking them today. So it's a little bit less, thirty-five thousand eight forty-four. Staff recommends approval of it.
Tomo.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Kerr and a second by Commissioner Lopez to approve item L as discussed. All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. We'll move on to item M.
Item M, discussion and consideration to increase the original purchase order twenty-two dash twenty-four thirty-two for the residential garbage truck from April twenty twenty-two from Rush Enterprises to an amount not to exceed seven thousand nine hundred, and authorize the mayor to execute any related documents, possible action.
The original price for the automatic side loader, it's a difference of about seventy-nine hundred dollars. The P O was originally cut back in April of twenty-two. The new truck is, is actually, I, the truck was headed from San Antonio, it's, it has arrived in McAllen. So as soon as we get the, the P O approved, that truck will be coming, I guess, to our city shop. I did, it did, they did say it was about thirty to forty-five days, but I guess they're trying to make me feel good here 'cause after two years of waiting for this truck. So there is a difference of seventy-nine hundred. They did say, because of the cost of materials going up, that there was a, a difference of about sixteen thousand, that they cut it in half. I, I, I don't know where to go from there, but regardless, it's eight thousand. So staff does recommend approval for the, for the truck.
City Secretary, Mayor, for the record, I'll be abstaining from discussion and consideration on this item.
Thank you, sir.
I will also, ma'am.
Two years, two years later?
Oh, Commissioner Ruiz as well.
Yeah, I'll be abstaining also, and in the spirit of transparency, my wife recently started working with Tasby, it has a nexus to buy board, so I'll probably be abstaining from any buy board items in the future.
Tomo.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Kerr and a second by Commissioner Lopez to approve item M as discussed. All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. We move back to item K.
Item K, discussion and possible action after interviews with the firms that submitted for consideration of the city of Wesaco, Alton Landfill Post-Closure Care Monitoring R F Q number twenty twenty-three dash twenty-four dash fifteen, and authorize the mayor to execute any related documents, possible action.
With the help of Purchasing Department, on February twenty-second, we conducted a, it's not a pre-bid because it's qualifications, but we held a online pre-qualification meeting. March seventh, we conducted a opening of those qualifications, which we had three firms that submitted, which is Robert Kissner, Terricon, and Weaver. All three firms were invited for an interview with the city council. Staff is requesting, once selected, I guess the presenter will select them from there. What's gonna happen, we have all three here. It's gonna be a ten-minute interview with the council, with Q and A afterwards. And they, I believe Homer picked out the order, which is gonna be Terricon going first, and then Robert Kissner, and then Weaver. Am I correct?
Yes.
Any questions from our three firms?
And I believe all the commission has their, their sheets in front of them and.
So, so there will be a one, two, three ordering, I guess, ranking from the commission, and then we'll go with the, I guess it's kinda like golf, it's gonna be the, the lowest score wins, right? In the rankings, so any other questions, let me know.
I have a question for Homer. Homer, you put this form together, do you want to explain anything to the commission or?
Or the commission has any questions?
Make any comments regarding the form? Or answer any questions from the commission as well regarding the form?
After the, the three presentations and the Q and As, me and Arce will tabulate the scores and come up with the, the highest ranking.
Okay.
Are you gonna request that go to firm, company, the presentation?
Yeah, that, that's already been explained to them, that they will, they will leave when, when one is present.
And we, they, they present, and then we don't take action on it until the next meeting, right?
So on the bottom portion of the, of the score sheet is what is gonna, is what matters, the top one is just for your basic notes. And Ms. Norma is, is going to take the.
Time?
Take the time, ten minutes on that.
All right, let's get started.
So we can call the first one, which is Terricon.
Thank you.
I do wanna clarify something, Mr. Gonzalez, if you can help us with this. This is just a question that the mayor had just right now. So whatever action is taken to make the selection today, that in itself will give the staff authorization to negotiate with that firm, correct?
Under the statute, once a selection is made based on the qualifications, then staff negotiate a contract. If you cannot reach an agreement, then you're the second ranked.
Okay. We just wanted that clarified today. Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez.
All right, go ahead and get started. Ready, Ms. Norma?
Yes, we're ready.
All right.
Thank you, Mayor Gonzalez, city commission and staff for allowing Terricon to present our unique qualifications on the Wesaco landfill post-close monitoring R F Q at the site in Alton, Texas. This presentation is a supplement to the previously submitted qualifications that I believe you have as well. My name is Jorge A. Flores, and I am the office manager of the Terricon Far Office, and I am a senior principal of the engineering firm. I have been with Terricon for twenty years, entirely located in the Far Office, and I'm originally from the Rio Grande Valley, born in McAllen, and originally from Roma, Texas. Overview, Terricon is a national multidisciplined engineering firm. We have six thousand employees across the nation, a hundred and seventy-five locations. We are one hundred percent employee-owned, and we have been in the business fifty-nine years of service. As you can see from our map, the biggest office footprint is in Texas with twenty-seven offices across the state. This shows our strength in the industry. Terricon, I'm sorry, E and R top five hundred design firms. In the two thousand twenty, twenty-three Engineering News Record publication, we are currently ranked twentieth design firm. And the E and R annually ranks the largest contractors, design firms in the U S and internationally, and we are proud of this ranking. Our local office, we are located in Far, we are located between Jackson and Sugar Road. We have approximately forty employees. Our footprint extends from Far West, Starr County, Roma, all the way to Cameron County and S P I. We have been, have, we've had a location here in the Rio Grande Valley since nineteen ninety-six, and we employ employees from all the way from Solomon City all the way to Brownson, including the city of Wesaco. Our service lines that we provide services are facilities, environmental, geotechnical, and materials testing. We are proud to have a diverse service line that will give the city of Wesaco all the requirements that are required for this particular project. Our market sectors, we, we service the public sector, municipalities, K through twelve educational facilities, also higher education facilities. We do state and federal work. We do work with TechDOT, we do work with Texas Facilities Commission, many agencies across the state, and also with the federal government, such as the Federal Highway Association. We perform power and generation transmission services as well with wind and solar, healthcare, transportation, infrastructure, commercial, industrial, logistics, and digital infrastructure. So we pretty much handle a lot of different type of sectors with our industry. Safety is key when it comes to Terricon. It is one of our co-values. Our commitment to being an incident injury-free company is an operational priority. We strive to build safety and well-being into all aspects of our business. As you can see here through that graph, the Texas, I'm sorry, the total recordable incident rate has significantly reduced for Terricon since two thousand and eight from two point eight to point five six. So our commitment to our employees is, once you come to our office, we're gonna get you home in a safe manner to their families as well. The project organization for this particular project, I myself will be the project, the program manager, I'm sorry. The program manager will, I will provide a review of the contract. I would also provide review of the, of the proposal, and also do some quality control on the submissions as well. To my right, I have Tomas Cruz, he will be the project manager for the, the project. And we also have field scientists, Joe Garcia and Abel Garza and Alan Blocks. We also have subject matter experts, these are subject matter experts that are solely experts in the solid waste services, so they will bring an extra line of quality to the, the project. The local Far team, I wanna really stress the fact that we are truly a local Far team, I'm sorry. We are all staffed within the Far Office. We do not have to go anywhere when it comes to having people do any field tasks, anything like that. We have everybody available. There won't have to be any type of extra costs having to do with travel and so forth. We are truly a local firm that have been here since nineteen ninety-six. I myself, I am a professional geoscientist, I'm a P G. I have been with, I have twenty-eight experience, twenty-eight years' experience as a, a P G, and I'm also what's called a not authorized project reviewer. Terricon is unique when it comes to project quality control, we go through an extensive audit process on our expertise, having to do with our expertise, integrity, and ethics. Tomas Cruz here is our mental scientist, and he has over twenty-five years' experience in the environmental realm. So why are we directly relevant to the, to the project? Tomas Cruz has site-specific experience when it comes to working on this project. He has been working on this project from two thousand four, two thousand nine with a prior competitor. He has worked in twenty-seven years' experience in environmental discipline pertaining to groundwater, monitoring installation, sampling, and regulatory agency compliances. He has been, he has extensive knowledge in the groundwater monitoring program, developing low-flow sampling, which is one of the techniques that we do when it comes to sampling the monitoring wells. He also has field instrumentation, hydraulic gradient services. He is also very familiar with the state solid waste agency, so he has intimate knowledge when it comes to that. He has personally done a lot of the field work, including monitoring installation, groundwater monitoring, leachate sampling, all the things that are required when it comes to this particular project. So with no further ado, he will be taking over the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Gonzalez, city commission and staff. My name is Tomas Cruz, I'm a valley native, I've worked in the environmental field for over twenty-five years, and I've been a Terricon project manager for five years. I've previously worked at the site, and I'm familiar with the scope of work for the project. As part of it, we understand the project includes semi-annual detection and annual assessment groundwater monitoring by low-flow sample methods. So we have four local staff technicians, which include degreed professionals that perform pre-task safety planning to evaluate all site and work scope conditions for successful completion of field work. that perform pre-task safety planning to evaluate all site and work scope conditions for successful completion of field work. Uh, low-flow sample pumps and groundwater quality meters are used for minimal stress to the water-bearing zone, allowing for collection of representative groundwater flow samples. Uh, prior to sampling activities, monitor wells are inspected to ensure that they are in good condition and not damaged in any way that may affect the sampling. Uh, calibrated meters are utilized to collect water quality indication parameters to help determine when the wells are ready for sampling. Um, water samples are collected utilizing, uh, sterile processes, sterilized gloves, sample equipment at each well to eliminate any cross-contamination that may occur. Uh, in addition, equipment blank, field blank, duplicate and quality control samples are collected. Uh, water samples are immediately placed on ice and stored in coolers to ensure preservation and a chain of custody is preserved. That includes, uh, information such as the monitor wall ID, date and time collected and the analysis requested. For methane gas monitoring, our experienced staff inspects gas monitoring probes prior to screening to ensure that they are in good condition. Uh, technicians use calibrated equipment, uh, for landfill gas detection of methane, hydrogen sulfide, carbon dioxide and oxygen. Monitor wells, gas probes and gas vents are screened as necessary per project specifics. We perform a landfill gas screen sweeping of the site as well to evaluate the environment for safe breathing conditions. Additionally, we are experienced in, uh, the leachate monitoring and recovery process and the annual TCEQ reporting process. Uh, with our local presence, we can also perform periodic site visits to keep the city of West Laco staff updated with the site conditions, which my experience in the past, uh, includes illegal dumping at the entry gate, uh, damaged perimeter fencing and well, gas probe and leachate evaporation pond conditions. Our support services include, uh, planning and design, which, uh, could include, uh, new landfill construction, hydro geological to monitor groundwater flow gradients, uh, CQA for new landfill cell construction, environmental assessments for property acquisition, uh, landfill inspection services, uh, for site conditions, subsurface investigations for soil, groundwater studies and well installation plugging. Uh, that would be for new wells as needed or to close out, uh, out-of-service wells. And if there's any remediation oversight to require on a project, we can manage that as, as a project requires. Uh, we understand the project field work and the reporting schedules and can adjust timeframes as needed. Uh, and with that, we appreciate, uh, we greatly appreciate the opportunity.
So why Terracan? Um, local office, local staff that contribute to the economy of the Rio Grande Valley. We have specific experience with a project with Tomas having conducted, uh, work out there from two thousand four to two thousand nineteen. We have extensive subject matter experts within our firm and we have also completed successful, uh, experience with the city of West Laco.
Time's up, sir.
Thank you. That was the last. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Yes, I, I think we have. How many minutes do we have for Q and A, Mr. Homer? That's part of the. You wanna go to Q and A now that we have him here?
Yeah, I mean, you're gonna ask. Uh, does any of the commission have any, any, any questions?
Yes, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Mr. George Tomas, how many landfills are y'all currently monitoring here in, in South Texas?
Here in South Texas, we do not have any, oh, actually not from our office, but we have one in.
In Corpus Christi.
So currently in the state of Texas, and I, I think I saw in that you have your San Antonio Dallas office, but.
Yes, we, uh, our offices are twenty-seven offices and there is, uh, we are working on other projects such as in Corpus Christi and, you know, we have staff that goes back and forth at, at no cost to, when it comes to the city of West Laco. It's just something that we do and that we supplement when it comes to any type of necessity.
Thank you.
Any more questions? No? Commissioner Kerr? Commissioner Lopez? Commissioner Gonzalez? Commissioner Ruiz?
You said you've worked on the site before?
Yes.
How many years?
Um, from two thousand four to about twenty nineteen, so fifteen years.
Fifteen years.
Fifteen years.
So you're very familiar with the, uh, project, right?
I did all the field work for the, uh, the, uh, project.
So my, my question then is, what do you think the biggest challenge is with that project?
The biggest challenge with that project, um, I, I think the honest biggest challenge is, uh, just keeping the, uh, site in good condition. Um, in my experience, uh, again, just going back to what I had briefly mentioned, um, the, um, I guess public, you know, at, at random just dumps of waste, uh, illegal dumping occurs at the entry gate and, um, also, uh, I know that, uh, likely, you know, young kids and, you know, maybe even older people, but they were cutting the fencing, uh, perimeter fencing and riding in with ATVs and there were a lot of ATV tracks in the evaporation pond for a while. And, uh, the last I remember, they were also, um, damaging a lot of the wells, a lot of the gas probes and even the evaporation pond, you, you would see small holes like piercings where they were damaging it. I don't, I don't know if they were, uh, shooting at it or something, uh, of the like, but, um, that's probably the biggest challenge. As far as, uh, the work itself, uh, what I remember is that, um, it was, um, in, in good condition as far as like the, uh, um, no, uh, leachate or no, um, chemicals of concern that had leach, uh, or migrated away from the site. So it was, um, it was overall in, in good condition as far as the cell structure that was there. Uh, but, um, yeah, that would be the biggest, I think, just maintenance, safe for safety purposes.
And one of the things that I, I was about to mention, uh, was that, you know, we would also provide a new set of eyes when it comes to what you already have done from, uh, since two thousand and four. Uh, and we would also, you know, of course, uh, be a true consultant when it comes to see, to see what is it else that we can do for that particular site whenever anything would arises or if there's any situations that, uh, something, uh, you know, needs to be discussed for other types of having use or innovations, we can actually be a consultant in that regard as a new set of eyes.
Oh, and what was your name, sir, again? I'm sorry.
Jorge Flores.
George Flores. All righty, sir. Thank you. I appreciate.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Yes. Good evening, everybody. Mr. Mayor, distinguished commission members. I'm happy to be here tonight on behalf of Roba Kissner to speak a little bit about our qualifications and address any questions that you may have.
Thank you.
I'd, I'd like to start with the introductions of our leadership, uh, team that's here tonight. Uh, myself, my name is Rick Klar. I'm an environmental geologist. Uh, been with, uh, Roba Kissner about twenty-eight years, uh, responsible for our geosciences group, uh, which includes all of the landfill services that we provide. Uh, I'm a professional geologist in the state of Texas and I've been, um, working on the city of West Laco project now since, uh, two thousand and four. Uh, with me tonight is Katrin Leonard. Uh, Katrin Leonard is a Vice President who, uh, is in charge of our Rio Grande Valley operations, uh, throughout South Texas. Uh, she's a geotechnical engineer with more than twenty-three years of experience. Uh, and she and I work very closely together, uh, primarily on complicated projects here in the valley that involve, you know, geology or environmental. Uh, we have a great working relationship. So just a little bit about Roba Kissner. Uh, we're an environmental and engineering consulting company that was started in San Antonio, uh, about fifty-five years ago. Uh, our core services include environmental, uh, geotechnical engineering, construction materials testing, uh, building sciences, infrastructure and then, uh, project and program management, mainly for construction. Uh, we've got offices throughout Texas. Texas is our main hub of operations. We've got offices locally in McAllen and Brownsville. Uh, and I, personally, I'm in, out of our San Antonio office. Uh, we've recently opened some offices in some of the surrounding states. Uh, we go where our clients take us. Um, we've been in the Rio Grande Valley for a little bit over thirty years. Uh, and we've, and over that time, we've done a lot of work on, uh, both public sector and private sector projects and, and we hope to, through those projects, to have made, uh, significant impact or a positive impact, uh, here in the valley for its citizens. So just to start a little bit with qualifications, uh, Roba Kissner is a full, uh, environmental consulting company. So we do all aspects of environmental, uh, but landfill business is a big part of that. Uh, we've worked on projects typically from the inception of the landfill, which is the permitting stage, all the way through maintenance and operations and then into post-closure care, uh, which is sort of the, the final step, uh, in the life cycle of a landfill. And that is the contract that, that, that you folks are seeking today, uh, that we would be, that, you know, pleased to assist with again, is seeing the city of West Laco's landfill to its final, uh, conclusion, which would be the end of post-closure care, uh, which, uh, at this point, that timeframe is, uh, twenty thirty-six. Uh, typically, the, the post-closure care period is a thirty-year program. And so it, this, for this particular landfill, it started in two thousand and six. So this slide just provides a sampling of some of the, uh, other landfill clients that we have. I'm very proud of the work that we've done in Harlingen, uh, city of West Laco and the city of Raymondville in particular, uh, because all of those projects were very similar to this, this current project. All of them involved post-closure care, uh, and all of those, we were able to bring those, uh, projects through to completion uh, without any regulatory, uh, issues. We, you know, we were able to manage those issues as they came up, uh, for the betterment of the, of the project, uh, to avoid, you know, you know, having to do a lot of additional work to satisfy TCEQ. So we're, we're very proud that there were zero notices of deficiency associated with our time on those projects. Uh, and city of Raymondville, I'd like to say, I, I started on that project when I was right out of school. Uh, and the, the process to close that landfill was very similar, uh, to the process that, that we need to follow here in West Laco. And we were able to close that project in two thousand and four, uh, and which, which ended in the revocation of that permit. And that's about the time we started working for the city of West Laco. So it's kind of, you know, that, that whole chain of life, you know, uh, one ends and another, another chapter begins. So, uh, across Texas, we've probably done more than two hundred different, uh, projects uh, that pertain specifically to post-closure care. So this slide, uh, this provides, uh, a timeline and th- these are key milestones in the post-closure care history, uh, for the city of West Laco landfill. And so you look back to two thousand and four, that my first involvement in this project was back when the landfill was actually still being closed, before it was in post-closure care. We assisted with helping fix, uh, some of the issues with the final cover system. Uh, and then from there, uh, we, we helped define, uh, the post-closure care program as it exists today. So that, in two thousand and five, we were basically helping with the permits and installing the systems, uh, that are still in place at the landfill today. Uh, the landfill gas monitoring, for example, and groundwater monitoring and those systems are the ones that are still being done, uh, being used today. Uh, in two thousand and six, we worked with the TCEQ on behalf of the city, uh, to, uh, approve a groundwater sampling and analysis plan and that, that is the plan that is still being followed. Uh, and then, you know, basically from two thousand and six through to twenty nineteen, you know, there's been ups and downs with detections, either methane detections or sometimes you get very low-level contaminants in the groundwater that are associated with, you know, sources outside of the landfill, not from the landfill. But every time one of these issues presents itself, it's, you know, it's, we've, we've come with the city hand in hand to go to TCEQ and explain what the issues are, ultimately to provide a demonstration that no additional actions needed on the part of the city and that we can continue this post-closure care period, uh, and not worry about it being extended. Um, most recently in twenty twenty, we started a process to, uh, reevaluate the, uh, statistical control limits that we use to show whether or not the landfill is in compliance, uh, in terms of the groundwater. That was a long, arduous process, but it, I think it was, it's gonna pay off, uh, for the city uh, because the TCEQ was of the opinion for a long time that some of these naturally occurring metals that we detect in water were a problem. And so we had to show them, no, those are really naturally occurring. There's nothing coming from the landfill. Uh, the situation that we see is normal for this area in the Rio Grande Valley. And we, in August of twenty twenty-three, we finally got their concurrence. And so that's the, kind of the end of this timeline and that's where we sit right now. Uh, this is our project team and I, I, I am the, would serve as the project manager. Uh, Katrin, uh, Leonard would be, uh, my number two. Uh, and the, the rest of the folks on here are geologists and engineers. Uh, and I'm, I'm proud to say that most of these folks have been associated with this project for the last twelve years, which is, uh, coincides with the time that I've been the, the project manager for the, for the city on this. So, uh, project approach is pretty straightforward and I, I heard the mayor say this tonight, that communication is the most important thing. And over the last twelve years, I feel like we've had an excellent, uh, communication and rapport, uh, with the Public Works Office. Uh, you know, for the recent program, we worked very closely with Mr. RC and his staff and we feel like we have, you know, zero problems with communication. Uh, the way the process works is we go out quarterly to check landfill gas. We go out twice a year to check groundwater. Every time we go, it, it involves a lot of coordination with the Public Works Group, uh, but the, and then we monitor that data very closely. The minute we see a potential problem, we notify Mr. RC and his group so that we can, uh, develop a plan of action. Most of the time, the plan of action is we go to TCEQ and we explain what the issue is and why we don't think it's a problem. Or, or in the, in the rare case that there is a problem, we explain how we're gonna fix it. So that in a nutshell is the, the project approach that we've, uh, proposed for this. So, so to summarize, uh, there's, there's a few things that we feel like we bring to the table on this that, that makes us uniquely qualified. Uh, number one is our extensive experience supporting all aspects of this project, uh, for the past twenty years. I mean, since the post-closure care program started. Um, we know all of the landfill systems because we installed them. So we're intimately familiar with all of the landfill's, uh, operations and equipment. We've got a proven track record.
Time is up, sir.
Okay, thank you. And I'd, I'd be happy to take any questions.
I think your presentation may have answered my question, but besides the city of West Laco, what other, is there any other landfill that you guys are currently monitoring here in South Texas or and in Texas?
Yes, sir. Uh, we're currently monitoring, doing similar work for the city of Harlingen uh, and we're also doing, uh, similar work for, uh, the city of Tomball. And then we have, uh, several different projects in San Antonio, uh, that we're also working on at this time. Uh, hi- historically, we had some projects in El Paso and then, of course, the, the city of Raymondville, uh, landfill, which is now closed.
Thank you. And like I said, yeah, you know, communication is key to a lot of this. And when, when I came in, uh, I told our staff and commissionists like, hey, communication's the key to everything. It's the key, uh, key to success and so, you know, you putting it on there, it's, uh, says a lot.
Communication with the city and the TCEQ. Unfortunately, those guys, it seems like they, uh, it's a revolving door over there lately, so we're, we're getting to know new people, uh, every month.
Yes, sir. Uh, do I have any more questions from the commission? Nobody? Mr. Ruiz?
Sir, you said you had two hundred similar projects around the state?
Yes, sir.
Past and present or?
Yeah, past, correct. Since our, over our fifty-five years of operate, it's been, you know, it's been a while.
And, and you said no deficiencies? I just wanted to verify that.
No deficiencies in West Laco, Harlingen or, uh, Raymondville. Uh, the, every so often, especially with permitting, but, which doesn't apply to this site, but with permitting, a lot of times there are, when you go through that permitting process, there are deficiencies that are then corrected. It's an iterative process.
But no TCEQ violations? But no TCQ violations?
No TCQ violations.
Great. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Save me some effort of trying to get that up.
Trying to get it up there.
My name's, I'll move that over. Mike Wyden, I'm a project director with Weaver Consultants. I have a little over 26 years' experience designing, constructing, and operating landfill gas systems, and also have designed and installed groundwater monitoring systems all around Thank you for the opportunity for here, for letting me just talk today. Weaver Company, our offices are generally up northeast. We also have offices in Fort Worth and Houston. We're a privately-held firm that has a little over 400 employees. We specialize in waste expertise, environmental consulting, civil and environmental engineering, odor control, landfill survey, and drove services, air compliance, oil and gas, support services, and construction management and materials testing, CQA. Currently work for the City of Edinburgh, sorry, City of Edinburgh, Fredericksburg, Grand Prairie, Denton, Garland, Fort Worth, Brazos Valley, solid waste management, and North Texas Municipal Water District. Our core values are quality service, client satisfaction, sorry, safety focus, sustained growth, company culture, and employee development. At our solid waste services, we are one of the largest solid waste consulting firms in Texas. We have over 75 dedicated employees providing solid waste services, again, specializing in odor control, transfer station design, permitting services, landfill engineering and design, landfill gas services, air quality services, CQA of both liners and landfill gas systems, life-to-site planning, leachate treatment, groundwater monitoring, and hydrogeologic and geotechnical investigations. We've been working with the TCQ for over 23 years and have established long-term relationships with TCQ staff and group leaders. We also work closely with both TCQ, EPA solid waste, and landfill air regulations. On our team's professional engineers, geologists, scientists, and other personnel tackle diverse and expansive range of projects from phase-one ASTMs, site-specific assessments, investigations, site-specific remediations, additional environmental and air compliance services, and environmental permitting, and EPA regulation support. We also do civil survey geotechnical services, include due diligence design, site planning, civil engineering, survey and drone services, earthwork analysis, construction document preparation, construction management, floodplain analysis, ADA compliance, and geotechnical We've been doing, as I said earlier, I've been doing this for 26 years, and we have multiple engineers and geologists. I'm a registered professional geologist with the state of Texas, and have been doing quarterly landfill gas monitoring, not only the operations of it, but the design of those wells and those systems to protect the environment in and around the landfill. Same thing with groundwater monitoring systems, very versed in leachate monitoring and recovery. As I said earlier, we're, we know the majority of the commissioners at the TCQ and have great relationships with them. It's a pretty quick presentation, that's, I just want to thank you again for letting us come back. Questions?
Thank you, sir.
How many, do you turn? Are you currently monitoring any landfills?
Are we monitoring any landfills?
In South Texas?
Down in the valley?
Yes, sir.
Yes, City of Edinburgh.
That's currently going on.
We do the landfill gas system there. We also coordinate with the energy developer out there, developer out there, which is Morrow Energy, and do a lot of design for them, coordination between the city and the energy developer.
Thank you.
Any more questions? No. Mr. Ruiz?
Have you all had any issues over there, any deficiencies or violations with TCQ with anybody?
Do we deal with those?
Have you had any while you've been monitoring?
Yes. Yes. Geotechnical engineers in Fort Worth deal with those on a basically almost, on a daily basis.
What's, I guess, just real quick, what do you see as the biggest challenge with that landfill?
I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't hear you.
What do you see as the biggest challenge with that landfill for that project?
Today?
Yeah.
Emissions, not so much odors, but emissions because of the EPA rules, the triple X rules that have come into play. Those are going to be the most challenging things to keep in, to keep under control. Migrations are not so big anymore. I mean, we've learned how to control those, we've learned and studied on how to clean up groundwater impacts from landfills, but there again, it's still the emissions that that's going to be the true issue going forward.
Well, thank you. I appreciate your presentation. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Are we turning this into you, Homer?
Thank you.
I said the bottom is important.
No, the little one was almost crying because he was bored, so they were not excited.
Commissioner, how old are your kids?
Twelve, eleven, eight, six.
Oh, yeah, four.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I was about to say, you should be driving a minivan, man.
Oh, that's what my wife does. She has a minivan. Yep.
Don't worry about it. I don't fall far behind, bro.
I try to get her a Tesla.
I'm right on.
You're going to be like Farias, Commissioner?
So when it comes to this, are you going to go back to item K?
Yes, we go to item K. You want to make the, or if you want them to do the presentation based on your scores. Mr. David, do you want to do the presentation based on the scores or the rankings?
The firms asked if they could come in.
Sure, absolutely. Absolutely. As a matter of fact, I think you want to wait for Mr. Farias, too, now?
Oh, yeah. Well, I don't know if he's going to come right back out.
Okay. We're going to wait for the firms, David.
Yes.
Before you get started, we're going to go ahead and move to item K, but David, before you say anything, I just want to thank all the companies that came and did their presentations. We really appreciate your time and you coming out and presenting for us. Thank you, guys, so much.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Mr. Austin.
So after all three interviews have been conducted, staff is requesting the approval to negotiate the agreement with the firm that is selected tonight for the alternate landfill monitoring, which will be presented at the next meeting. The three rankings will be Weaver was three, TerraCon was two, and Robert Kissner is one.
All righty. So move to engage in negotiations with Robert Kissner.
Second, sir.
I have a motion by Commissioner Kerr and a second by Commissioner Lopez to approve item K as presented by Mr. RC. All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
Motion to go to executive session.
A motion by Commissioner Farias. Second by, anybody?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lopez to go ahead and move to executive session.
Time.
The time is 7:15.
Can I get two?
Executive session. A personnel discussion regarding goals, objectives, and evaluation of the city manager for the City of Weslaco is authorized by section 551.074 of Texas Government Code. B real property consultation with city attorney on the acquisition, sale, exchange, lease or value of real property located on 18th Street, West of Pleasant View Drive, described as being 12.16 acres of land of gross 14.82 acre tract of land out of farm tract 706, West Track subdivision, Wesco, Del County, Texas, as authorized by section 551.072 of the Texas Local Government Code. C real property consultation with the city attorney regarding the purchase, exchange, lease or value of real property legally described as a south 12.50 of lot three and lots four through nine, block 26, Wesco Regional Townsite subdivision, Wesco, Del County, Texas, as authorized by section 551.072 of the Texas Government Code. D real property consultation with the city attorney regarding the purchase, exchange, lease or value of real property legally described as a west track being an irregular tract of land out of N14, S435.45, E671.78, FT53, 3.84, AC, Wesco, Del County, Texas, as authorized by section 551.072 of Texas Government Code. E legal consultation consultation with city attorney relating to potential litigation regarding the claim against PNC Bank as authorized by section 551.071 of Texas Government Code. F legal consultation consultation with city attorney relating to potential claim or claims on via the Cortez parking structure as authorized by section 551.071 of Texas Government Code. G legal consultation consultation with city attorney on personnel matters related to the fire department as authorized by section 551.071 of Texas Government Code. H economic development consultation with, consultation with the city attorney regarding financial offer or other incentives for Project Pleasant Grove as authorized by section 551.087 of the Texas Local Government Code.
It is 8:40, and we are back from executive session.
Mayor, on item S, recommendation to authorize staff and city attorney to settle the claim against TML to repair damages to the parking garage as discussed in executive session.
So move. Second. I have a motion by Commissioner Lopez and a second by Commissioner Kerr to approve item F as discussed in the back. All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
All against? Motion passes.
On item G, mayor, recommendation to authorize the city attorney and staff to proceed on personnel matters as discussed in executive session.
Second.
I got a motion by Commissioner Kerr, second by Commissioner Lopez to approve item G as discussed in executive session. All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
And finally, on item H, recommendation to approve incentives plan for Project Pleasant Grove as discussed and presented by the EDC in executive session.
Second.
I got a motion by Commissioner Lopez and a second by Commissioner Gonzalez.
I'll ask the minister to reflect that I'm not participating in voting on this side.
Okay.
That's all, man.
All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. The other motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right. All in favor, let's go.
Thank you.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, everybody.